Good evening, I call this meeting to order. First is the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do. Just ask me to do the roll call.
Okay, this meeting is being recorded by our secretary. Madam Secretary, can you please take a roll call?
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Jackson.
President.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Present.
Ms. Weed. Mr. Reimers.
Yes.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Okay, first item of business is the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion for the approval of the previous board minutes?
No move.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is our public comment. I believe we have one person that has signed up for public comment.
Mr. Del Rossi.
State your name and area of residence, please.
George Del Rossi from Milford Township. At the June 13th meeting this year, I requested information on admission to the tech school for my 13-year-old homeschooled daughter. We were told by the administration that Quakertown's policy does not allow homeschool students to attend tech school. That was false information. The August 8th meeting, we were told by the administration that there was a policy that conflicted with Policy 115, and that conflicting policy disallowed homeschoolers from the tech school. Also, false information. August 22nd, the board finally voted to follow its own policy, 115, that stated homeschoolers were eligible for admission to tech school. After being admitted, being admitted, and attending tech school for two months, on October 25th, with a 98-average perfect attendance and a great review from her teacher, my daughter, without warrant, notification, or justification, was thrown out of the tech school. This has had an adverse effect on my daughter, both emotionally and in her academic studies. This is the opposite of what the school board is and should be trying to accomplish, taking a motivated, enthusiastic, and advanced student and stripping away her future ambitions. September 26th, the board voted not to change Policy 115, and would continue to allow homeschoolers to attend the tech school. Okay? Why is it that after the board voted that way, to not change the wording in Policy 115, that it is now currently changed on board docs? The word "homeschoolers," which you voted to not remove, is now removed from the policy on board docs? Seems to me that the administration does as it likes regardless of what the board decides in its policies. It also seems as though the administration will give false info to the board to get the board in their favor, as it is doing here. I think you're getting bad information. Please, get past the false information given to you by the board, seek out the truth, and stop the administration from bullying my daughter any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Rossi. I don't believe we have anyone else signed up for public comment, but would anyone else like to make a public comment this time? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent report. Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Dr. Harner is at a professional development course today and tomorrow, which is required for his superintendent's letter, so I'm sitting in his stead. And I just wanted to share a couple of highlights about the farm show. That, I believe, is the milkshake photo, because no one goes to the farm show without getting a milkshake. We had students there from, oh, and the butters.
If you want to talk to him.
Well, I, no, it's just, it's fine. You saw the butter sculpture there, which this year, part of the butter sculpture is Gritty, which is the new Flyers mascot, who has proven to be very popular. Go figure. We had students from the tech school that were there. A couple of the pictures show Caleb Roth, who's one of our high school students, who was the reserve junior champion with his hog, whose name is Junior, and who was raised from a little pig. We also had students competing in sheep and goats and various other things. We took eighth graders from Strayer on a field trip there. We also took fifth graders from Quakertown Elementary, so that they could have that experience. The support for the farm show is such that not only does PDE require that it be an excused absence for students who attend, but they also provide grant funding to defray the costs of our transportation. So next year, we're going to try to get even more students to go. The range of agricultural products is pretty impressive, that all of the different farmers in Pennsylvania create, sell, develop, in order to support their farming. And I believe that one is the one of the Secretary of Agriculture, who Dr. Harner knew from some prior thing, of course, and got the Secretary of Agriculture to do a photo with our students. So it's a tremendous experience. It's still going on, so it's not too late to, I believe it ends on, let's see, Thursday, Friday, Saturday? Yep, it ends on Saturday. And if you've never gone, it is an amazing experience. So I just wanted to, we'll probably have some of our kids come back and talk about it at a later meeting, and I know Mr. Sueda said at the JOC meeting, the JOC board members will hear from some of our students who went. But it was, it was really, really neat, so. The only other thing on the superintendent's report is, and I believe, Mrs. Mitchell, this came from your conversation in setting the agenda with Dr. Harner, there is a conflict in the February meeting date. February 20th is also the JOC meeting date, and there are a couple of important presentations that are scheduled to take place that night, one of which is on the budget.
Correct.
And the other would be Mrs. Paradi from the Bucks IU, who was going to talk about the comprehensive planning process. And so what we were proposing was perhaps changing that meeting date to Monday, February 24th. There is not another Thursday that does not have conflicts, but that Monday, the 24th, could be an alternate date. So if that is acceptable to the board, then we would make that change in the board meeting schedule, but Mrs. Mitchell had asked that we bring it up here for discussion, so.
What was wrong with 13th and 27th?
I do not recall the nature of all the conflicts, but there were reasons why those were not selected.
I can speak to those.
Okay.
So Dr. Harner informed me that he is attending a superintendent academy, and as well as some of the other leaders in the administration are attending certain performance meetings of sorts, and so in order for us to, in order for Dr. Harner to be present at the meetings, he was requesting that we not only look at Thursdays, to change our meetings from Thursdays to a different day for that particular date, but to consider, and that's why we wanted to get your feedback, to consider what the board wanted to, or, you know, if the board had any thoughts on changing the meeting dates from Thursdays to a different day of the week. He says, "Everything happens on Thursdays and Fridays with conferences and professional development opportunities outside of the district." And that's why he did ask us previously if we wanted to move the board meetings to a different night. Palisades and Penridge, for instance, are earlier in the week, as are most other districts in Bucks County. And our staff missed several excellent opportunities to attend workshops and conferences because our Thursday night meetings due to travel time across the state.
So this is a question specifically for February, not like all meetings moving forward, right?
So I think the initial, more pressing item is the February 20th board meeting date. However, this, it stems, it seems, across the rest of the year, the school year, for professional development opportunities for our staff. So I think initially, we need to discuss the pressing meeting on the 20th, and then get the board's feedback on future meetings being on Thursday nights.
I think it's clear that the one on the February 20th certainly warrants immediate action. Just speaking, to move along, I think we should agree that the 24th is acceptable. I'm not sure if anybody has a conflict on that date. As far as the, going forward to Mr. Akmanowicz's point, I would be a little reluctant to suddenly hog-wild, change all our dates. For the year, I would rather suggest we consider doing that for the new school year. So for example, starting with the August meetings, we can consider doing that. But I think we need to right away, you know, throw a vote out there on shifting the one to the February one, and we can discuss, you know, don't let me be the last word here, but everybody else can, what do you think about Mondays? I'm going to throw Monday out there as a good day.
How about we just go with, I'm okay with the 24th. Can we just kind of check that box real quick?
I'm, I have a conflict on that day, personally. I don't want to be the only one, obviously, but.
In order to get it going, I'd like to make a motion that we relocate the meeting from the February 20th to February 24th. That's my motion.
And I would second it.
So. Yeah.
My discussion would just be, does anybody have a conflict on the 25th? That we could, I don't know.
I don't have a conflict on the 25th.
I do.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Not a big deal.
Let's know.
I don't. 24th, you know.
It's my son's birthday.
And my wife's birthday.
I'm just being honest.
24th, 25th, do you have a preference?
Family first.
Any, it seems like any of those dates that week are good for me.
Um.
The motion on the table is 24th. Would you rather I amend it to the 25th? I understand Mr. McCucci's already stated he will not hit that one. Ms. Mitchell, obviously, will not be at the one on the 24th, so we have.
26th?
No, no, I mean.
Anybody have a conflict on 26th?
Let's do 25th.
Keith, would you feel like we're single and yachting if we change it up to the 25th year, so that our president?
Be crushed. Be crushed.
Well, does anybody have a conflict on the 26th? Why not? Look at that.
I will, unfortunately, I was planning to miss the March meeting. I have another event that day, the 26th, I think, is it? Do we have two in March? No, we only have one in March, I think, right?
Yeah. Well, this is going swimmingly.
So we can't move it, can't move it to the 18th? Like move it just two days before the 20th?
That's a, that's an interesting idea, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
18th?
I'm out of here by nine.
18th is going to be the IU. But again, I mean, if you want to have a board meeting, and somebody's going to be absent, accept that fact. Okay? Stop worrying about who that person's going to be. Pick a date and move on.
Well, shouldn't we try to accommodate everyone if we can?
Just make it the 25th, that's cool. I mean, I just, you know, I got a couple demerits on my attendance.
No perfect attendance for Keith.
Well, they're excused absences, it's okay.
Well, does anyone have a conflict on the 26th?
No.
I'm okay.
It's my yoga night.
It's a Wednesday.
Small part of me believes you.
It is. I'm okay here. I'll do yoga.
All right, so if, everybody seems to be fine.
Make it the 25th. I think most people can make it the 25th.
Everybody, there's no conflict on the 26th?
We can do yoga.
Okay.
Point of order to Mr. Garten, can I just amend the motion from the 24th to the 26th?
Assuming the person that seconded would agree to your amendment.
Yes, I would second.
So the motion's amended to be the 26th, Madam President, and.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. Any other discussion before we vote on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
In order of expediency, do we want to move the discussion? I'm throwing out that I think Monday would be a good day to move the board meetings to. I can't do Tuesdays, depending upon the day of the week because of IUings. I'm not sure what, Mr. Akmanowicz's tech school meetings are held on what day of the week that is. I think that's a Tuesday as well.
It's actually third Thursdays.
Okay, so third Thursdays, there's that problem. So we don't need to discuss it right now if we want to get through the meeting tonight quickly, but consider, everybody should begin, and I think, like I said, August, we should make the motion, or when we decide to do it, I think shooting for a change, beginning with the August meetings is something to shoot for.
Sounds good.
Wouldn't you know it, today was the day I marked my calendar up, all the freaking meetings.
All right. Now, moving on to the standing committee reports. Mrs. Weed will be here shortly, so I will move on to the facilities committee, Mr. Spear.
We did meet for the facilities committee on January 2nd, and we discussed three items mainly. The first one was a baseball field suitable for our baseball team to play when it's wet. Currently, they miss a lot of games every time it rains, and the, we spent more than a half an hour discussing this issue. The administration has been searching for ways to help the high school baseball team avoid rainouts because of an unplayable field. That Quakertown has offered Memorial Stadium for a $1 a year lease, and the baseball team would be able to play on that right away if we would be able to use it without putting any renovations in. We would like to ask the board tonight to approve an estimated cost proposal, or an estimated cost of $10,000 for moving forward with doing an inspection at the field and the bleacher facility, to see if it would be worth our school district taking that on from Quakertown. There could be a lot of costs. The building's in pretty rough shape. The field still does get wet, but not as wet as our current field. So that's what we'll try to consider tonight. There's also an update on the Nighting Elementary School project. Everything is going on budget and on time, and they have, they still plan to be in there by around August, or have the date, I should be reading this instead of guessing. Okay, we should have the date for August 15th, should be a substantial completion date, where we'll be able to move stuff in and have everything ready to go. And then the results of the lead testing were good. All the schools passed. Oh, that's, sorry, not all the schools. Poff and Trumbowers were the only two schools tested, but that's all that the EPA requires. So. That's it for the facilities meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Spear. I told you Zach's got good notes. Tell me. Okay. Moving on to the education and curriculum committee, and who would like to read that report for Mr. Anderson tonight, since he is absent?
I guess, we're just talking about the one we just had, right? I don't think there was anything last month.
Right.
So there were, I don't know, 100 pounds of textbooks. I did glance at each one of them. It's, they're fun.
Well, you hoarded them all down at that end of the table.
Well, just, yeah.
You share them at all.
Yeah. Yeah, I checked to make sure things like Boyle's Law were correct.
Yeah.
And Newton's Laws. And then you primarily helped explain to some of the newer board members what your committee does, and, you know, eloquently talked about how you and Chad and the rest of the OTL do the six-year curriculum cycle, and just kind of the philosophy behind it, which is, I think, very beneficial for others to hear. And I don't think there's any. Oh, pathway options in the future, I forgot about that. I think I zoned out, I was looking at some textbook at that point. So I have no idea about pathway. I will fully admit, I did not hear that part.
Dave, you can feel free to.
Okay. Anything else that I missed?
If I could just add, later on in the agenda, we did put the program of studies back on, even though you did approve it in the past. If you remember, it was missing the courses for music because we were looking for name changes. So those are now in the document, and I'm just asking for another approval, just so that we have all of the appropriate courses in there before students start to select them.
Great. Okay, thank you. And the next committee report is the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mr. Akmanowicz.
The last meeting of the JOC was December 19th. It was also our reorganization meeting due to the most recent elections. Megan Bannas Clemens of Penridge will serve as treasurer. James Halliwell of Palisades will serve as vice chairperson, and I'll be serving as 2020 chairperson of the JOC. Various subcommittee arrangements were conducted, and they'll all be available on the Upper Bucks County Technical website if you're interested. The board held an executive session prior to the JOC meeting to discuss legal and personnel issues. District student, excuse me, December Student of the Month is Dana Beck, a graphic arts program. She's a senior from Penridge High School. Jeff Sueda reported Palisades Community Foundation contributed $3,000 to the food truck, and there were also other various donations of supplies for the mechatronics program, courtesy of Jeffrey Van Fossen, totaling almost $3,600. Breakfast with Santa was a success, we had over 200 people in attendance. When I was there, I saw many happy faces, and we had a great time. Special thanks to Mr. Jackson. I get to see you at all of our events, and he, this event was no different. Thanks for coming and supporting the tech school. Thank you, Nancy Ann, for reporting on the farm show earlier. Additional thanks to the principals and administrations for their efforts moving on this opportunity to see that so many students have had the opportunity to experience the smells and scenes of our legendary PA Farm Show. I don't think there is any butter way to spend a Tuesday. Did you get that? Yeah, I was trying to get a third one in there, but I'll be here all week, thank you. Mrs. Dankha and our veterinary science program had four students recognized January 6th at the PA FFA Midwinter Convention held during the farm show. One of the students was a Quakertown student, Nina Silfer. She's a senior, and she received her Keystone Degree, which is quite the accomplishment. January. Last month? Thank you. January 29th, 2020, is the Skills USA District 11 Competitions in Allentown. Best of luck to our students. Various conversations regarding our attendance policy were discussed. We discussed PennDOT agreements, obsolete equipment, enrolled track requests by the administration ensued throughout the evening. Prior to the meeting's close, I made a motion for the board to research the policies and procedures we would need to bring into agreement internally, to make video of the JOC meetings publicly available with respect to my commitment to transparency and accountability. The next JOC meeting is January 16th, and I'd like to just point out that Jeff Sueda, our director of the technical school, is joining us here today, and he's sitting in the audience. If anybody has any questions, you can say hi to him. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Akmanowicz. And I have to say, I did a tour of the technical school, thank you so much for that. Phenomenal. Phenomenal. I mean, it's amazing, the programs that are offered there, and I didn't realize all the services they offer to the public. We need to advertise those more. They give fillings. Did you know that? To people. Real people. I was like, wow. So, yeah. So not to, not to press you as you walk in here, Ms. Edwards, would you do Mrs. Weed a favor and do, just run over the policy, the last policy committee, if you wouldn't mind? Sorry to put you on the spot there.
The only item that is on the agenda for tonight, because the committee hasn't met since the December 5th reorganization meeting yet, so the policy that is on for second reading and approval tonight is the same 808 that was presented at the last meeting, and it just brings the food service policy into alignment with the student debt policy. Because once we changed the student debt policy, there was some language in the food service policy that needed to be brought into alignment. And I believe, I didn't like read it right before the meeting, but I believe the, a significant change that was made to it was to provide the proper mechanism for people who wish to make donations to defray unpaid meal debt, that there be a proper mechanism in place to do that. And that is the only policy item that's on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. All right, I do not have a president's report this evening, so we move on to the next item of business, which is the public comment on fiscal items presented for a vote. Do I have anyone that would like to give a public comment? Okay, our fiscal consent agenda tonight includes a resolution for the facsimile signatures, approval for the treasures report for November 2019, approve the budget transfers for November 2019, approve contract with Blue Chip Sound for 2020 commencement, approve room rental agreement with the Upper Bucks YMCA, approve the 2020-2021 fuel bid commitments, approve the master services agreement with the BCIU for risk and vulnerability assessment services. Can I get a motion to vote on the fiscal consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Edwards, and is it helpful if I do that? Mr. McCucci? Okay. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the public comment on the facilities consent agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay. Items on the facilities consent agenda, capital projects consulting services with DEI, approve the contract with SSC. Can I get a motion to, to vote on the facilities consent agenda?
No, moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz, Mr. Reimers. All those in favor, say, oops, sorry, discussion?
DI's Dewey, right?
That's supposed, yeah, I don't know why it says that. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item of business, public comment on the human resources items presented for a vote. Is there any public comment? Okay. You thought he was going to give a comment. Okay, on the, the agenda is items up for vote, professional staff, support staff, unit pay, substitute staff. Can I get a motion to vote on the human resources consent agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Akmanowicz, can I get a second? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I keep, I'm so sorry, guys. I'm a newbie. Forgive me. Discussion. She's helping me out. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda, public comment on the office of teaching and learning items presented for a. Presented for a Vote. Is there any public comment? On the agenda tonight is the Approval of Program of Studies. Couple of tweaks there. Can I get a motion to vote on that, please?
So moved. And a second.
Mr. Kern and Mr. Akmanowicz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. What's the record, Nancy?
We're gonna, we're closed.
Oh, wow. Keep it moving.
We're closing. You take a drink?
I'm sorry.
That's because there's no discussion.
Okay. Next item is Public Comment on Policies and Program Items Presented for a Vote. Is there any public comment? All right. On the agenda tonight is the Approval of the QCSD 2020-2021 School Calendar. Did you guys notice it starts before Labor Day this year? And then the Approval of the Policies Presented. This is going to be, as Ms. Edwards mentioned earlier, Policy 808. Can I get a motion to vote on the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Weed, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson. I'm sorry. Jackson. Discussion.
Ms. Edwards, would that be the second reading for the policy?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are on to our information items. The first one is the School Start Times Committee. Were you presenting on that tonight or just here to? Okay, I was just asking. I wasn't sure if you were part of that committee.
The committee, Mrs. Mitchell, will be doing a brief presentation to the board on their work to date at the next meeting on January 23rd.
Perfect. Thank you for that. So there's some minutes in there and some information from the previous meetings. We also were featured in the morning call, I saw, regarding the school start times. So that was, that was good. That was a good read. We also have the December Suspension Report. There's some information there under Executive Content. Next item on the agenda is any new business? Do we have any new business from any board members?
Can I just ask a question about the earlier comment by the gentleman who spoke? Is that true that there was a, did we put the right policy up or can we double check that?
I just looked at it, and it doesn't look like it's the right one. So I actually already emailed my assistant. I can check that.
Okay. Thank you.
We have been enrolling homeschool students in the tech school.
Right. I knew we were. I just wanted to make sure the right policy's up, that's all.
I would just like to point out that I hope we can get this right this time around, and it's pretty embarrassing.
Thank you. Any other new business? All right. I will go to the next item, which is our final public comment. Mr. Del Rossi.
George Del Rossi from Milford Township. Couple of questions. I know you weren't able to speak prior, but can anybody tell me why my daughter was taken out of tech school, or are we still at the same standing?
We are actually, and this should be the ongoing theme, but our public comment is actually just a time for comment and typically not, you know, for us to respond.
Specifically, okay. Mr. McCucci may have just answered or started the conversation separate, but still has to do with it. Can anybody tell me why that policy was changed even though you guys voted? Not even talking about my daughter here. So totally separate, I think that's what you're just talking about, Mr. McCucci.
I just wanted to make sure the right policy's up.
Right.
We, we know what the right policy is. We spoke about it last time. I think we'll just make sure the right one's up.
Sounds like it was just oversight.
Could be a clerical error, could be.
Not sure.
Okay. I mean, it seems like, like if the policy is worded the way it is, I mean, it, it, it's not like a typo, like it got retyped, or I could see a mistake, but how would it be possible to change if somebody didn't purposely go in and change it?
Uploaded the wrong one, possibly. Human error. I mean, there's a lot of reasons for it, but we'll fix it.
What does it matter?
What's that?
I mean, hopefully they'll, they'll figure it out, but what does it matter if we knew the answer to that question?
Well, I mean, it matters because I sat here and witnessed you vote to not change it, and then it got changed.
Yeah, but in this particular case, we just acknowledged that the one on the website is inaccurate.
Oh, okay.
That was just said right here in front of you, and we said we're going to fix the problem.
Okay. I, I heard him mention it, but I didn't hear the response.
Nancy Ann specifically said she looked and saw that it was the wrong one.
I couldn't hear it. That's why I came up and, so, so it's correct, it'll be fixed. Okay.
We apologize. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
All right. Next item is dates for the Board Members' Calendar. So January 16th is the policy, well, actually, that, that looks like that may change, and so maybe we, I should bring that up. The Policy Committee was changed to go to Wednesdays, and the reason for that was, one of my goals was to make sure that all committees were available to every board member and not to overlap with other meetings. And so we changed those over to Wednesday, but it sounds like Wednesdays may not be the best day for everyone on the Policy Committee. So for those in the public interested in attending those meetings, stay tuned as that date may change. I do believe that the next Policy Committee that was scheduled for January 16th may be, in fact, canceled as there's not anything pressing for that particular meeting agenda. Yeah.
There were conflicts with that meeting, with other meetings?
Yes.
So we are definitely not going forward on the 15th.
Is that, is that correct? Okay. So that?
Yeah, Wednesdays aren't good for me.
No?
Yeah. We'll, we'll find another date. We'll reschedule those.
Okay. Great. All right. And then on January 23rd, we have a Finance Committee, 5:30 to 7:00. February 6th, we have a Facilities Committee. On February 13th, we have a Policy Committee, actually, to stay tuned on that one because that one may change as well. Sounds like it will. And then on February 20th, we have a Finance Committee. All right, and now I just need a.
Can I add one, one real thing quickly to the calendar? For those interested, the Bucks IU runs a quarterly gathering they call the Advocacy Committee for Education. It's for those school board members and district executives who are interested in what the legislature in Harrisburg is doing. Again, it's a quarterly meeting, and the one coming up for January is next Friday morning. It's always a 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. event. So it's 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. Friday morning at the Bucks IU offices down in Doylestown. And they said that the main topic of discussion at this particular one will be charter school reform. So if anybody's interested in what's being done in Harrisburg for that, feel free to drop by. There's usually about 20 or 30 people from the various school districts who show up, so it's well-attended, and you get a free breakfast out of it.
Thank you.
And on the, on the 23rd, I have a question. If, I'm going to be going down to Guatemala in the morning of the 23rd, but I might have internet access by the time of the meeting. Can we do Zoom or something like that? Do we have? Yeah, okay. Cool.
A couple of other items I was just thinking about as well. We have our Second Annual Service Day for Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 20th. So if any board members have not signed up yet and would like to participate in some type of service work, there, there is a sign-up that's out there. Any community members interested in doing that as well? My son and I participated last year. It was a lot of fun. He cleaned bathrooms. He's, he was nine years old, and I'm like, he's not going to clean bathrooms. And then he found out that there was a lot of older girls that were cleaning the bathrooms. And so he did. And so now he cleans bathrooms at home because I know he can.
Give back. That's what it's all about.
He'll learn. That's a failed strategy.
One other calendar item I want to just bring to everybody's attention since we're all here, reminder that Monday night is the next board retreat for those, just to make sure everybody saw it on their calendar.
Very good reminder. Thank you for reminding us of that.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Thursday, January 16th at 7:00 p.m. in the high school's Performance Performing Arts Center is a kindergarten parent information night for anyone out there interested in that in the public. Let's see, what else we have here? Tuesday, January 21st, from 6:00 to 7:30, Quakertown Community School District's Family Nights continue, and this is a free event titled Dinner, Storytime, Games, and Hot Chocolate. That sounds like fun. And the district is hosting a job fair for three Upper Bucks School Districts from 9:00 a.m. to noon on the Monday, January 20th in the District Services Center.
Before you wrap up, I want to make it one point. I'd like to remind everybody, the Upper Bucks County Technical School has a food truck. We're always looking for local business sponsors, family sponsors that like to help us fund the truck. And you get your nice, you know, business logo on, on the side of our truck, and please reach out to the Upper Bucks County Technical School for more information.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone else?
I think sponsorship started $1,000, so it's relatively affordable. I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that so that, you know, everybody can see. It is a pretty cost-effective way to support the school.
Can you hire the food truck?
Can we, yes, we can. Yes, you can.
All kinds of services.
Bring him to your house for Thanksgiving, you know?
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Spear, I think. All right. Oh, gosh. I was so excited. Motion. I mean, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?